...meeting of the Oshkosh Common Council. Welcome to everyone joining us tonight here in council chambers, as well as those watching or listening through Oshkosh media. We're pleased to have citizens participate in their local government anyway, so welcome to all, and happy Valentine's Day to all. Would the city clerk please take the roll call?
Stepanek. Pack.
Here.
Paul Mary.
Here.
Herman.
Here.
Allison Osby.
Here.
Pansky.
Cummings.
Here.
Present five.
Councilman Stepanek was going to do the invocation and pledge of allegiance tonight. He is not here. Mr. Herman, would you like to do it?
Deputy Mayor's going to do it.
She doesn't have one on her phone.
There is not one on my phone.
Oh, alright, I will do it. Sure, no problem.
So if everyone please stand for the invocation, all about the pledge of allegiance.
We come together this evening to discuss the issues that confront our city. May we always seek the wisdom to do things that reflect our concern for the people whom
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which extends, one nation, united in God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now would our two students like to come forward for a second? We have a certificate for you. And if you want to turn and face that corner near the cameras. Go back a little bit. Okay, first, what is your name, your age, where do you go to school, and what is your favorite part of Valentine's Day?
My name is Destiny Lowe. I go to Els Charter School. I am thirteen, and my favorite part of Valentine's Day is, I guess, just eating some chocolate.
That goes for all holidays. Your name?
My name is Katrina Hupner. I go to school at Tipler Middle School. I'm thirteen, and my favorite part of Valentine's Day is when it ends.
Yeah, there you go.
Wow, when it ends in candy. Alright, thank you very much. Let's give our students a hand, and they can stay and watch, or they can go home and First on the agenda this evening is a public hearing. It's Resolution seventeen dash forty-eight. I will read this three times, and after that we'll take a vote. So Resolution seventeen dash forty-eight, approve a final resolution for special assessments paving, sidewalk, driveway, utilities, first local street concrete paving program near east side, contract number one seventeen dash oh-four. Resolution seventeen dash forty-eight, approve a final resolution for special assessments paving, sidewalk, driveway, and utilities, first local street concrete paving program near east side, contract number seventeen dash oh-four. Third and final reading, Resolution seventeen dash forty-eight, approve a final resolution for special assessments paving, sidewalk, driveway, and utilities, first local street concrete paving program near east side, contract number seventeen dash oh-four. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak to this resolution?
Good evening. Paul Schmidt, ten twenty-five Bay Shore Drive, Oshkosh. I just wanted to address the council here one more time since the December thirteenth meeting wherein there was kind of a, there was discussion about sidewalks on the south side of Bay Shore Drive, and kind of a straw vote, I guess, taken where four of the council members agreed that there should be a sidewalk from Bowlin Street up to Frankford, I think it is. And I think there was a little confusion with what the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee had approved at their November seventeenth meeting. And I'd like to share that with you, just for clarifications. It says that Mr. Otto, the chairman of the committee, made a motion to not construct sidewalks on the south side of Bay Shore Drive. Mr. Stangle suggested that there should not be sidewalks on the south side of Bay Shore Drive, except for the area up to one thousand one Bay Shore Drive. That's the apartment building. And there was some discussion in December about that, that those residents should have sidewalk access. Mr. Otto then made a motion to not construct sidewalks on the south side of Bay Shore Drive, except to the west of one thousand one Bay Shore Drive to Bowlin Street. Mrs. Pansky seconded that motion, and the motion carried unanimously. And I think that the confusion, at least for me, was the fact that it sounded like the pedestrian committee was recommending a sidewalk, but they were only recommending a sidewalk from one thousand one Bay Shore Drive, which again is that apartment building, to the west, which is to Bowlin Street, not to the east. The way it's laid out right now, the extension of the sidewalk to the east is simply going to go nowhere. It's a sidewalk to nowhere, that's what it is. It's going to go for a few hundred feet past where it currently exists, and it's going to end, and that'll be it. I have spoken to my neighbors, and they're not in favor of the sidewalk. There is going to be some destruction of green space naturally, and everybody loves green space, and that area particularly is very historical with what it has to offer, from wildlife to green space to nice trees and architectural properties. The sidewalk, there's one person that I see that is a tenant who crosses the street with their dog to walk it on the north side of Bay Shore. That is the only person that I ever see that crosses the street to use the sidewalk. So as far as I'm concerned, the people on the south side, I see one person that uses the sidewalk. So once again, I'd like you to just take into consideration the cost that's involved with it, the loss of green space that's going to be lost in it, and I think what is kind of a worthless extension of the sidewalk because it doesn't lead to any place. With that, I wish you all a happy Valentine's Day, and I hope you make a happy Valentine's Day for me and my neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak to this resolution? I see no one coming forward, so I'll bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved. Second.
Discussion?
I have a question.
Mr. Herman?
Mr. Gode, you're probably very familiar with this project. How far down on the north side going east from Bowlin is the sidewalk going to go? Is it going to go up to Frankford, like we discussed?
On the south side of the street? Yes, the plans currently show a sidewalk going from Bowlin Street to just shy of the intersection of Frankford where it lines up with the crosswalk for crossing the intersection.
Okay. And that's pretty much what I think council had decided. I know there was one council member that wanted the whole thing, but I think we kind of compromised to have it so that if people were walking on the south side could cross safely at Frankford. And with the apartment complex, there might be some small children in that, so I think that's good. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
I guess just a comment to Mr. Schmidt's comment. I think it's a safety issue here to have that sidewalk on the south side to Frankford. That area does have a little more traffic than the rest of the street, and I know that not a lot of people walk in that area, but I think it's a safety issue for some of those folks that live on that side of the street wanting to get to Frankford and go up that way to the park or wherever they may want to go.
Would you please take the roll?
Pack? Excuse me, Pack.
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried five.
Now moving on to citizens' statements to council. Citizens are to address the council only. Statements are limited to five minutes, must address items that are not listed on the council meeting agenda, are limited to issues that have an impact on the city of Oshkosh, and the common council may address at a future meeting, and must not include endorsements of any candidates or other electioneering. Is there anyone that would like to speak to the council at this time?
Check. Tim Ernst, twenty-three East Melvin Avenue. I've got my timer here. I'll try to stick to five, but excuse me if I go a few seconds over. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, I am here today from, and that is the Oshkosh Renters Coalition. We're a fairly new organization. Our first, our Facebook page launched on Sunday. As of today, we already have as many followers as the Winnebago Apartment Association's Facebook page, so we're pretty thrilled about that. I am here generally to announce our arrival, express our general support for the rental inspection ordinance, but specifically today I'll be addressing what we feel is a lack of transparency on the rental inspection ordinance debate from the part of the opposition. And I would like to respond today to claims that landlords have repeated over and over again as true. To clarify, when I talk about landlords in this instance, I am talking about those opposing the ordinance, or specifically thanks and supports those landlords who have the tenants' best interests in mind by supporting this ordinance. I tried to bring, or I was interested in exploring some of these issues with actual landlords last night when I was invited, and then summarily asked to leave the WAA meeting last night in town, ironically because I wouldn't put my name on a registry. But I will begin, this presentation will largely just be a rundown of some of the comments that we've heard in this debate and our response, our organization's responses to it. So first, the landlords like to say that the ordinance is an assault on renters' rights. Well, I'm happy to announce as of yesterday that that is not really the case. The ruling from a federal judge in Green Bay seems to support this. There is also plenty of literature, legal literature distinguishing administrative searches from criminal investigation in terms of entering a dwelling. Limited scope of the inspections means that people's rights will not be unduly violated. It is a bigger burden for this community to have to deal with obstructionist landlords. There is no coherent position coming from the landlord on the question of tenants' rights. The Yellow Sign Campaign around town suggests that renters have rights, but no effort is made to clarify what those are. Even the Colorado-based organization from which these signs are being acquired and sold in town cannot specify. They refer people back to the Winnebago Apartment Association, and thus the problem kind of replicates itself. The only concrete information from landlords about potential violations is on the question of parking enforcement. They try to show that due to a relatively low number of parking violations, that will indicate that the ordinance is unnecessary. Well, parking is not heat. Parking is not water, and parking is not infestations. That comparison is simply asinine. Secondly, they say we already have a right to an inspection in the status quo, and that's fairly true. Unfortunately, there is no information on inspection, on our right to inspection, on the Midwest Realty Management's website, Schwab Properties website, or Ultimate Properties website. There is no information on the Discovery Properties website, including their renters' handbook, their student handbook, their frequently asked questions, or their online listings, except for a few lines on the website and in lease agreements which say that by moving in, we just say the place is okay. And whether this assumes an inspection requested by the renter is unclear. Neither Don Lord, president of the Winnebago Apartment Association, nor that association itself has a website where information is available, which is interesting since Mr. Lord himself said in a Northwestern article on September fourth, 2015, that quote, "Putting all aspects of the rental agreement in writing, including all legal requirements, and what is expected of both parties." Often things come up because things were not put in writing, and there is a lot of assumptions made here. Well, despite the sentence fragments used there, I would like to discuss what those assumptions are. It certainly seems that they are assuming that tenants do not know their rights and will not pursue them. Anecdotal evidence from our organization at least suggests that landlords are trying to avoid inspections altogether. Next, they say it will destroy their business and that tenants will have to end up paying for it. No specific information has been provided on this question in any publication I have seen. I know America's been made great again, but failure to reveal financial records on sensitive subjects seems counterintuitive. There is also a sentiment that renters will be stuck with their price increases. I would ask, how is this possible? We know from previous meetings that the fee for the inspection would require about a three dollar month, per month rent increase over that five-year time span to cover. If costs for common repairs to necessary infrastructure of a home would bankrupt landlords, then perhaps their business model is flawed. Perhaps also they rely on the assumption that renters will not pursue their rights. That seems unfair and contradictory to the message that landlords care about tenant rights. And finally, if we don't like it, we can just move, is what they say, and that's publicly posted on our Facebook page from local landlord Edward Wilcox. We should not have to. We are contributing members, renters are contributing members of this community, and to suggest that if you don't like it, you can just get out, could be equally applied to those landlords. Take your business elsewhere if your business is exploitation. So to conclude, the objections of the inspection ordinance on behalf of those landlords are vague, scattered, and unsupported. I hope the ruling yesterday definitively ends the question of constitutionality and that landlords realize that renters' rights do not include the burden to supply them with profits. Due to the increasing amount of long-term rentals in this community, specifically by millennials, which as reported by the Pew Research Center today, they are more likely to spend longer time renting because jobs aren't available and mortgages are not being applied for. The statement of the Oshkosh Renters Coalition is that now is the key time to establish justice for renters in this town and correct the imbalance in power between tenant and landlord. We thank the landlords who think this ordinance is necessary. ORC does not seek antagonism between landlord and tenants. ORC wants tenants to access the full scope of their rights in order to help this community thrive, so, thank you.
I'm sorry, sir, could you just repeat the name of the organization one more time?
It's the Oshkosh Renters Coalition with an apostrophe S, O R C, ORC. And we're on facebook.com/oshkoshrenterscoalition. We have advocacy and educational information available, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Someone get all the information.
Hello, I'm Eric Smeltnick, eighteen fifty-five Hickory Lane.
And I'm Steve Eliasen, resident fifteen twenty-eight Grove Street here in Oshkosh. We're here this evening and thank the council and all officials before us today. Just really wanted to do a two-part, five-minute presentation regarding winter sports activities, outdoor sort of adventures for youth in our community, what the landscape is. My sense is that maybe not everybody in the community, or maybe in our council knows kind of what's going on. And also maybe a little call to action, or a little positive dreaming to the future of what might be. So just to summarize very quickly, Dr. Eric Smeltnick, with, family practice doctor with Theta Care, and I have been working with skating and skiing primarily through schools, as they say, that's where the kids are. So the idea is that any student, any youth in Oshkosh can experience ice skating on our very close-at-hand, delightful natural resources, and then skiing on school grounds primarily, but also using city properties like Menominee Park, or like Red Arrow Park's sledding hill. And so in recent years, this year, of course, we're a little spotty on snow. Last year was a little spotty on snow, although we still got over a thousand students out on skis. Many of those for a single experience, although a fair number were recurring weekly sessions. Dr. Eric's been instrumental in running weekly, well, Dr. Eric Skate Club, right? So kids especially from E. Cook and Webster-Sanley on the east side of the community go out to Millers Bay Ice and skate like mad, and play some hockey, and practice a few twirls along the way, and it's quite a fun circus to see. Maybe let Eric speak to that a little bit.
Yeah, and I'd also like to recognize a couple people through the Parks Department. Chad Dalman and Tom Bauer have been really instrumental in helping out, keeping that ice surface clean and everything like that. So I just wanted to bring their names up through the general public. But we've been able to, basically on Thursday afternoons, and actually Thursday throughout the day, bring some students out to, out to kind of a natural ice surface, which is really kind of a historic thing that's been going on for, I think, probably at least decades, if not longer, in Oshkosh. So I'm using, utilizing some of our natural ice, so I'm hopeful that we can kind of continue this movement going. If anybody from the council or in the public would like to, like to see this in action, we are pretty much all day long from, I think, eleven o'clock till four on this Thursday are having kids on the ice, so if you want to drive by, or stop by, or skate by, we are happy to have folks. But yeah, Steve and I have both been working pretty hard over the last four or five years to sort of revitalize winter sports, and the reason that Theta Care is, and as a physician I'm interested in this, is we spent, kids are spending way too much time inside, looking at screens, getting fat. So if we can get kids outside and enjoying the great natural resources we have, that's a really wonderful thing to see.
One of the really, the things that I love about this program is, as I mentioned, we can take any student, if they don't come from a skating or skiing background, or if they're in challenging home or economic environment, you can still ski, right? It's easy and it's safe, and you can do it right at school. And so we start with downhill skiing, for example, on school grounds with an eighteen-inch hill, right? And to me, that qualifies as downhill skiing, right? Mostly getting familiar with the gear, the concept, a little practice. And then we say, well, why don't you come to Garbage Hill on Saturday morning? We're there with gear and instructors and all the safety stuff you need. Now you can ski down a two-hundred-foot hill. Hey, by the way, do you like this? Come with us to Nordic Mountain on Sunday. We do downhill ski club. And so we've had any number of kids going from this kind of a hill to, well, the, and if I could go to the mountain ski photo, please. Jake, some of the kids have actually come through that program and skied in Quebec at Moltron Lot with us. So you go from eighteen inches to two thousand feet, immersed in another country and language and culture, and to me, that's the real beauty of it. Yes, skiing is great in and of itself, but I am a firm believer that if we put our kids in this world of skiing and skating and outdoor adventure, well, they're around M.D.s and engineers and entrepreneurs and business owners and people who have big dreams and big aspirations and a big global perspective, and I think if we do that for our Oshkosh students, now we've changed the landscape. And so you might notice the posters that I've left with you, and I'm not delusional that somehow we've been absorbed by the province of Ontario, but my point with these posters that we do is that what if Oshkosh had the same vibe of Ottawa in the winter, where the Rideau Canal is this longest ice skating rink in the world, and people are cross-country skiing all over, and kiosks are out in winter, and winter is a festival, it's a season-long festival? And I think we're not far from that in Oshkosh, especially with God like Dr. Eric, you know, leading the charge. So my plea to the city, to the residents, would be, when presented with a possibility of what might be, for example, a rope tow, or a warming chalet at Garbage Hill, or a temporary tent, or yurt, or temporary bathrooms, or something that helps make the whole thing work a bit better, I'm asking for your full embrace of what might come, or with a skating club, if we want some sort of facility at Menominee Park, or sort of ever-increasing incremental improvements to the infrastructure, it would help because, and I don't say this as sort of a, as a dire warning, but I wonder, as compared to a city like Green Bay, where they've got an in-town ski hill with rope toes and a warming chalet and bathrooms and all the stuff you need, and Appleton with five city-owned skate rinks, I wonder what happens when a medical practice tries to poach a family practice doctor from Oshkosh and says, "Come bring your practice here, and by the way, you've got all the winter sports infrastructure you need, you can really thrive here." And that's always my concern, is that we would do well to grab these opportunities while they're in our midst, so.
And I mean, to kind of build on that comment, one of the things that, I happened to be out in Steamboat Springs over the weekend and went to their winter carnival, which was really, it was run by a winter sports club, not unlike what we have basically in the schools and stuff like that. Basically, the city was alive, thousands of people in the downtown. I think that type of stuff could happen in Oshkosh if we had some of the support of the local government, the Chamber of Commerce and things like that. We have had sort of ricklings of winter carnivals and things like that in the past if you do the Oshkosh and stuff like that. So what I'm hoping for in the next couple of years is that we have something like that where we close off streets, or we utilize the Leech Amphitheater and have some sort of an event where we really celebrate youth, youth skiing, and bring people to the community.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else I'd like to make statements to the council?
I am Richard Bast, fifty-one Cherry Park Court, Department eleven, and I would like to speak in difference of the earlier gentleman. I have been a renter in various states and various cities for more than thirty years. I've had my issues with landlords, I've had my issues with other tenants, et cetera and so forth, but I have always known where the laws were, and where my rights were, and what resources I had available to me as a renter. Now, one of the questions I have for the council is, why did we jump from nothing to this invasion of my privacy in my apartment? I'm not incompetent. I'm not somebody that can't take care of themselves, but I don't think it's fair that somebody can enter my apartment, and even if I say no, if that checkbox on that form is not filled, they have a right to get a warrant to enter my place. I'm against that. Now, why wasn't there an information campaign for renters in the city to let them know what their rights are, what their resources are, before jumping to this travesty? So that's, that's something I'd like to see considered, even though it's pretty late in the process, right? And in difference to the gentleman, I know he's angry, I know there's bad landlords out there, but let me tell you, you can go to court, you can take them down. It's happened. And the last thing I would like to mention, and I've had an issue with this, not with inspectors, but with tax assessors, in which they acted unethically and aggressively to my mother in particular, offering services that he should not have been doing for a friend in a different city for more, for tens of thousands of dollars, which put undue stress on her. Now, this, there are opportunities and resources out there for people to use without having to invade on people. I want to be able to have the right to say no without somebody having to go and get a warrant and disregard my intentions. That's all I'd have to say.
Is there anyone else I would like to address the council?
Abby Amacher, five thirty-five Central Street. I am also part of the Oshkosh Renters Coalition, and I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but I kind of wanted to put a face to some of the problems as someone who's a renter. So I've lived in Oshkosh for a better part of the last twelve years. My husband and I have chosen Oshkosh as a home. Eventually, we want to purchase a home. Financially, that's not what we can do right now. I have rented from five different landlords in the city of Oshkosh in the time that I lived here, and my issues have ranged from having my windows be painted and nailed shut with non-working smoke detectors, and no response from Discovery Properties in regards to those safety concerns. One day, someone lit the dumpster on fire across the street from our house. I smelled smoke, smoke alarm didn't go off. Thankfully, there wasn't a fire in my bedroom, but had there been a fire in another part of my house, I wouldn't have been able to safely exit my home. I have a friend who's had medical issues from toxic mold- I have a friend who's had medical issues from toxic mold in a different Discovery Properties facility. In another rental, our heat went out on a daily basis. The landlord had someone come over one time to look at it. We lived there for three years. Every time we had said the heat has gone out, his response was, we'll just go downstairs and flip the switch, and it doesn't come back on, let me know tomorrow. It's not acceptable in Wisconsin, especially with the frigid winters that we've been having, to have your landlord say, well, sorry, your heat doesn't work, deal with it. A third landlord, who's our current landlord, who's done a better job than anybody I've rented from in the past, we had no working plumbing for five days. We had three sewage backups in our basement with no actual solution until they completely stopped working. And after five days of not having any running water, he was able to get a plumber there. The gentleman on Facebook today, Edward Wilcox, who is not in favor of rental inspections, I asked him point-blank, would you live in a home with these conditions? And I haven't received a response. But that's what I want people to think about. If you wouldn't live in a home with those conditions, why would we expect other people to do it? And if this gentleman says, we'll take him to court. I hold my master's degree and thousands upon thousands of dollars in student loans. I can't afford to take my slumlord landlord to court. I don't have the extra money for that, and neither does my husband. So in a perfect, I'm a social worker. In a perfect world, that's what we would do. We would advocate for ourselves. But what about people with limited education who don't know? What if you have no access to internet? If tenant rights pamphlets are not handed out by landlords, and you have no access to the internet, and you don't have a way to get to our library, public transportation in our city could be a little better, how are you supposed to access that information? And so my point of this today is just, I'm a well-educated person, and I'm a renter. And if you have something so awful in your house that you're afraid of someone seeing, one, you know when the inspection's going to occur, take it out, and two, you're probably breaking the law anyways. So I have no issue with someone coming into my home to say, make this safer. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to the council? I see no one coming forward, and I will move to consent agenda items. These are items of routine administrative nature that are voted on by the council in a single roll-call vote. Staff recommends approval of all items. Any member of the public or common council may request that an item be removed in the consent agenda for discussion. Number one, reported bills by finance director. Three, receipt and filing of museum board minutes from January 12, 2017. Four, receipt and filing of library board minutes from December 22, 2016. Receipt of claims filed with city's insurance company, A. Chloe Wen Schneider, for alleged damages to her property from the street department. Resolution 17-49, authorized submitting application to Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation for community development investment grant for south Main Street improvements by the arena, accept funds. Resolution 17-50, award bid for public works contract number 17-17 to Pashinsky Construction, Inc., for Hemlock Court and Fraser Drive Concrete Paving, 169, 180,099 cents. Eight, resolution 1751, grant noise variance request to AT&amp;T for utility repairs in the Jackson Street and Murdoch Avenue Roundabout between February 23, 2017 and March 3, 2017. Resolution 17-52, award bid for three-year agreement for uniforming place and services for police department to Lark Uniform Outfitters, award bid based on 2017-2019 unit pricing. Resolution 17-53, approved purchase pursuant to state Wisconsin Cooperative Purchase for 2017 Police Vehicles by Police Department to E-Wall Automotive Group, 208, 322,000 dollars. Resolution 17-54, approved purchase of flooring for the Oshkosh Public Museum to Creative Edge Master Shop, Inc., 20,216 dollars. Recent personal property taxes, Pluswood Group Credit Union, located at 302 State Street in the amount of $7.68. Resolution 17-56, recen personal property taxes, Hurst Brooklyn Car, located at 525 West 20th Avenue, 133.19. Resolution 17-57, approved license transfer and combination Class B license, Class B fermented malt and Class C wine license, special Class B licenses and operator licenses. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak to any of these items on the consent agenda? I see no one coming forward. I'll bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? I see no discussion. Would the civic clerk please take the roll?
Pack.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Curate five.
There are no items removed from the consent agenda, so we'll go to pending ordinances. This is ordinance 17-58. This is the second and final reading. For those who are not aware of this process, this ordinance was first read on January 24, three times, and now we're moving to adopting this ordinance. Amendment residential rental contract registration required ordinance to clarify registration requirements to delete remedy of withholding occupancy, to amend the residential inspection ordinance to delete the requirement for 21 days notice prior to schedule inspections and to clarify when inspections will be done with consent or upon obtaining a warrant. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this pending ordinance from the council?
Yes, I would like to have you tell me why the 21-day notice period has been rejected.
Could we have your name again, please, and your address?
Richard Bast, 51 Cherry Park Court, Department 11. I think 21 days is an appropriate time. I don't think it's too long or too short.
Do you want me to address it now or when it comes to council?
Wait, wait till it comes back to council. Well, we'll answer, get your question answered when it comes back to our portion of the hearing.
All right, thank you.
All right. Tim Ernst, 23 East Melvin Avenue. ORC is also concerned with specifics related to any amendments to the rollout. It is our position that while the ordinance is in the best interest of tenants and we have a full intention to comply, comply with the new regulations and already existing laws, it is for the benefit of all that any, anything relating to scheduling and the rollout of the program needs to be clearly established, and the community needs time to access those materials. That includes educational and reference materials, more information on the Rental Housing Advisory Board and what that role is, if that's still part of the ordinance, would be beneficial to this as well. And an official position of the Oshkosh Renters Coalition is that the city comply with the inspection, the scope of inspections in a way that is fair and equitable to maintain the rights and privacy of citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this before I bring it back to the Bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Ms. Lawrenson, if you could answer the gentleman's question, and then as well that I'd like to reiterate the point that this is the second reading of this. So there were some, there was some information shared in public about how this came about and that these changes are being made specifically related to the recent, the case that's been filed. You detailed much of this in your memo of several weeks ago, as well as a subsequent memo related to this. So could you, all of us are aware of this, these memos are also available on the city's website with our agendas, so could you just kind of give everyone the color and exactly what is going on here and why we're doing what we're doing?
Sure. Initially, the council had directed staff to draft a rental inspection ordinance, like we do with all ordinances. We looked at all the state statutes and all the laws and made sure that we were drafting the ordinance in compliance with those. In this case, even considering some things that staff maybe believed we would have done differently, but the statutes required us to do. So the ordinance was drafted to meet the requirements of state and federal law. After the ordinance was passed, we took another look and saw some things that we thought we could clarify or make a little clearer, be a little more efficient, both for staff's perspective from how we enforce the ordinance, and also just to be more clear to the public. Sometimes we know what we're writing and what we mean, and after you read it again, it can be made clearer. So during the recent court hearing, the judge also brought up a couple of things, and that's some of the things that we realized in conjunction with the changes we were already bringing forward, that once again, we could just make things very, very clear. So we're not making an unconstitutional ordinance constitutional or trying to do anything tricky. It's really to revise details of an ordinance that received an initial very positive reaction from the federal court judge. The court's favorable decision was based on the ordinance as it actually already exists. These changes are even better than those. They're to make it more clear, more efficient. Most of the changes, and I'm just going to refer to my notes so I don't miss any, are for clarification. The, we want to make the ordinance clearer for us and for the public, you know, changes in the registration process and clarifying that we had some changes with regard to when inspections may be conducted, who would be present. Again, those were just for clarification after it was brought up, particularly in some of the comments of the judge, that, you know, you could, you could read this or you could read it that way. That wasn't, not how we intended it. We wanted it to be very, very clear. I think that the way we've redrafted the changes and what you have before you tonight is very, very clear. There's a change pertaining to occupancy permits. That might be an effort to just really very, very meticulously comply with state law. Statutes don't address that issue. And to make sure we're just overly abundantly complying with that state law, we remove that, we don't think that really changes our ability to enforce the ordinance or have any effect on that, so that we're removing that. Finally, there is the change to remove the 21-day notice provision. That provision was kind of a leftover from some previous drafts of the ordinance where initially inspections had proposed that they would send out letters and schedule an inspection, and so they wanted to give this really pretty long three-week notice period to give people time, if that time wasn't a good time for an inspection, if it needed to be rescheduled, just to make sure people opened up their mail, because you bear may not open your mail right away. So they gave this pretty long period of time, 21 days, to make sure that everybody was aware of the date and time that they chose for inspections. As the ordinance worked through, it became clear that wasn't how we were going to actually do it. The inspections Division now sent, they're going to send out letters, and they're going to ask the tenants to schedule the inspections. It really just doesn't make sense to have 21 days' notice anymore. So if we send it out and the tenant says, you can come next Thursday, leaving this in, we'd have to say, no, we're sorry, we're going to have to send you a letter and tell you, give you 21 days' notice ahead. It's something that, because the ordinance changed, it just doesn't make it efficient or make sense anymore. So that's why that's being proposed to be removed. I think I answered all the questions.
Just one clarification. In no way, shape, or form are these changes being made to either make it constitutional or fall under the state statutes. These are just basically tightening things up, that things that are inferred in the original one, this is making them explicit.
Correct. We believe that the ordinance, as it was originally drafted, like I said, we draft all our ordinances to comply with the state statute and the constitution. So we believe the original ordinance was drafted to comply with state law and the constitution. The judge's decision gives us an initial favorable ruling on that, that issue. It's not the final decision in the case, but it was at least a favorable review for it. But nonetheless, it just is to make it clearer and more easily understood for everyone.
Again, again, making things explicit.
Yes.
Rather than inferred.
Yes.
Thank you.
And Mr. Rolla, could you speak to, I think that there was also a question regarding the rental advisory board, where we're at in terms of applications and creating that rental advisory board? Is that appropriate here?
I was going to answer that question.
It's in the ordinance, so it's appropriate to have an answer for it. We have been soliciting members, but we haven't gotten a great number of members, is the mayor's point.
We have two, and this has been five months after we created this commission.
And we need seven.
We need seven.
Right. So I think it's a great idea to ask it because we can just let people know we are still accepting applications, and the council specifically said in the ordinance that they wanted to have a diverse group of members, both renters, landlords, and the general public, to have a perspective, a wide perspective of thoughts and opinions. But we can't create a commission with only two members. So certainly, if anybody's interested, applications are available online. You can contact my office. Diana, my office can get you an application, but the easiest way is simply to apply online on our website.
I'm sorry, we do have that application for the new commission online.
The, we have a general application for all boards and commissions. You just specify which board or commission you wish to be considered for.
Okay, thank you.
And related to the question about education, our community development department has many of the materials that people are looking for that have, they can help assist people related to that, correct?
Yes, we have all sorts of information, both on our website as well as by contacting our community development department.
So, okay, so there is information that is out there. The city is doing its part to share this information.
This is an opportune time to do my usual plug for our boards and commissions. We have about 21, and we're always looking for people to sign up on a range of boards, from long-range finance to planning landmarks, bike and pet. And it's one way to serve your community and be involved in your community is to be on one of these boards and commissions. So with that said...
I would have thought with all of the heat and light this subject has generated, that we would, that this would be one that we'd have to narrow the field, so to speak.
We can't do anything until we have a full complement. But it's been five months, and there's no one showing an interest. With that, I believe there are no more questions from council. Would you please take the roll?
Pack.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Curate five.
Next is ordinance 17-51, approved parking regulation on Bay Shore Drive. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to that? I see no one coming forward. I'll bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Would you please take the roll?
Pack.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Curate five.
Now, the new ordinance is, the first is ordinance 17-60, and there will be no formal action taken on this ordinance at this meeting. Ordinance 17-60, repeal and recreate Chapter 2 of the City of Oshkosh Municipal Code pertaining to administration, and Article 1, Division 2 of Chapter 16 of the City to Oshkosh Municipal Code pertaining to anti- Oshkosh Municipal Code pertaining to anti-discrimination in housing. Anyone that would like to speak to this? I see no one coming forward. Any council comments or questions? If not, I'll just move forward, we're not voting, correct? New resolutions? Resolution 17-61, approve amendment to plan development for Lincoln Hall parking lot, 608 Algoma Boulevard, Plan Commission recommends approval. Anyone from the public that would like to speak to this resolution? I see no one coming forward, I'll move back to, bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Would you please take the role?
Pack.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Curate five.
Resolution 17-62, approve planned development for a multifamily residential development, 173 West Ripple Avenue, Plan Commission recommends approval. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak to this resolution? I see no one coming forward, I'll bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Would you please take the role?
Pack.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Curate five.
Resolution 17-63, approve lease agreement with Fox Valley Pro Basketball, Inc., 1212, South Main Street, Lot 2 of CSM 7081. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak to this resolution? I will bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
The gentleman.
Discussion.
Is there, Mr. Davis, I assume you want to speak?
I was here for any questions, but I just wanted to point one thing out, the redevelopment authority met earlier this afternoon, and they also approved the proposed lease.
Well, I, I will vote in favor of this. Mr. Pierce, thank you very much for all the work you did and your group for, for putting this together. Mr. Jason White, thank you for all of the work that you and GoEDC put in to get this deal done. Mr. Roloff, Mr. Davis, and city staff, thank you all for the work that you put in to facilitate this. To my colleagues on council, the many nights that we had, closed sessions related to getting the Buckstaff property cleared, and to allow this to happen is, I thank you all for that. This is a great opportunity for Oshkosh. One of the things that I do want to point out is, is that last week at the, the press conference, was the positive comments that the Bucks organization made related to Mr. Pierce, his group, GoEDC, city government, and city staff, they said that they made this decision because Oshkosh was the place that they wanted to be when they looked at this. So to everyone involved, job well done, and we look forward to throwing the first ball up come this fall, so, thank you.
Just have a question, Mr. Davis, could you just kind of go over this lease agreement, which I support, is a lot like our Marion Road leases, can you just speak a little bit about how they compare and why we do these and et cetera?
We do this because it's a site that needs to be closed according to the DNR, so we can get that certificate of completion. So like on all the Marion Road projects, the proposed property owner can start their project, we lease it to them for a dollar, and then while they're building their building and their parking lot and putting in the landscaping according to the DNR approved plans, they, once that's completed, then DNR gives us the sign-off, and then the owner and the city are no longer responsible for any of those, that pre-existing contamination. So it protects the city and the property owner from that, everything that's happened on Buckstaff until they actually own it. So it's kind of an insurance policy for everybody involved, and we have to do that lease until we actually get that insurance policy from the DNR.
Okay, very good, thank you. I think that's good information that our citizens can hear about and, and know, because there's been some, again, social media stuff that talks about some of the exposure and stuff, so this is a great opportunity to explain that, so thank you very much.
Mr. Davis, just looking at the certified survey map that came with the packet, I was asked about, if you could maybe clarify, Lot 1 and Lot 2 have two different addresses on the assessors website, I think it's, is it 1116 and 1212, or 1118, the northern part of that?
Yes.
Can you just talk about that, because most, everything is referring to 1212, the southern portion?
Yes, right, and we created two lots on that property, so we could apply for two different grant applications last year, so that was kind of artificially created to separate the different types of costs for that grant into two different parcels. As it turned out, we only got one of the grants, still is $150,000, so that helped quite a deal, so thank you very much, Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation. But in the meantime, Lot 2 is where the arena would be built, Lot 1 is still being, that's where the buildings, the final buildings are being demolished. Once those buildings are down, then the city will take possession of that lot as well, and then we'll lease that land, but the parking lot isn't something that we're gonna be working on until sometime this summer, so we've got plenty of time to do that. So you'll see a lease come back for Lot 1, once the city has it available to, for redevelopment.
So it's two separate lease agreements, two separate lots?
At this point in time, we have to do that. My expectation is, before we actually sell it, we'll combine it into one lot again.
Very good, thank you.
I just have a couple of comments to make, I made these at the press conference, I mean, Oshkosh was once considered a boomtown, that goes back a lot of decades, even before I was born, guys.
No, I'm not concerned.
Thank you, I just, but I think what we've seen in the last few years, maybe the last five or six years, a tremendous change in the city of Oshkosh. It's just a can-do attitude between the council, between city staff, and between the citizens of Oshkosh. Everyone is just ready to move so much forward, you know, with the River Walk, the Aviation Industrial Park, now the Arena Project, I mean, it's just, we've become, again, the whole state is watching what Oshkosh is doing in a lot of different programs, so we've taken a leadership position once again, and I truly think we have become a boomtown with all that's going on, people are talking about Oshkosh, so, thank you, everyone. And with that, if there's no more words, would you please take the role?
Pack.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
We're now down to Resolution 17-64, which is approved city manager performance evaluation for 2016 and amendment to employment agreement for 2017 compensation. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak to that? I'll bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Would this be my cue? Mr. Mayor, take over.
That's for the deputy mayor.
Cue. Well, first of all, I'd like to thank my city council colleagues that I work with. Middle of the year, for those that don't know, a few years back, when I was deputy mayor, we implemented a mid-year review for the city manager, so that at the end of 2015, for 2016 goals, and so we met, it was June, July, for a mid-year, in order to make sure that city manager Roloff knew where he stood as far as, you know, what type of feedback we wanted to give him based on the first half of 2016, and then, that then led us to where we're at now. And so we started the review process in the, the later part of October, and again in November, in December, and so I would like to thank my colleagues, because of course, those were additional nights in closed session to discuss that, and I also wanted to give special thanks to Councilman Steve Herman, as last month there was a couple of challenges that I had, and he was willing to step up, and I was able to delegate a couple of items onto him, so thank you, Mr. Herman. So what our, our statement is to the public, is that city manager, Mr. Mark Roloff, continues to show high energy to multitask and to remain balanced with a focus on both details and the larger policy issues. Through these tough economic times, he has demonstrated the ability to continue to move forward with the strategic priorities and the vision of the city while keeping services to the citizens intact. The council continues to encourage his visible and active involvement in a wide spectrum of community activities. The council has seen Mr. Roloff become much more visible in the community, working with citizens and other organizations. He has attended many community events and is well-respected in the community and the state. The council continues to want the city manager to provide counsel with his weekly newsletter, continue to improve and easy understanding of the budget process, that would encourage options when there are budget concerns that deeply impact the budget. The council understands 2016 saw continued significant challenges to the budget with the continuing, continued funding cuts and levy restraints imposed on the city from the state budget, yet with diligent work by Mr. Roloff, Finance Director Larson, and staff, the city was able to approve a balanced budget, continue street and storm sewer improvements, and move the city of Oshkosh forward. The council understands there will be difficult times ahead, but we are confident in the city manager's ability to continue to deal with these issues in a professional manner for the betterment of the city and its citizens. So moving forward with 2017, and of course, this has been discussed with Mr. Roloff, there are four goals in which we are hoping that, in among his many, many daily duties that he has, some emphasis for 2017 would be, council will work with city manager and staff to evaluate all the different boards and commissions to determine effectiveness of the groups and what groups council members should participate in. Two, city managers to work with the IT department to focus on a fully responsive website for the city and the citizens of Oshkosh. Three, work with council to revamp and revise the citizen survey to have a better representation of the community. And four, council will work with the city manager to evaluate all city-owned facilities, outdated facilities, ones that need upgrades or replace current facilities, do these facilities meet the needs of the strategic plan and overall comprehensive plan of the city. So Mr. Roloff, we would like to thank you for your work in 2016, and with that, we certainly appreciate your service, as well as the dedication of, of the staff to get the job done.
Thank you very much, and I look forward to continuing, enjoying my job and enjoy working with everybody, got a great staff, and look forward to achieving those accomplishments, very, very doable accomplishments for 2017.
And thank you, Deputy Mayor, for all of your hard work, this, you did a heck of a good job.
Thank you.
Lots of hours, so thank you.
Thank you.
With that, would you please take the role?
Pack.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Curate five.
Next, we move to council discussion, direction of city manager and future agenda items. The first, the future workshop and future agenda, I just said that, discussion on council's recommendations to DOT for Jackson Oregon Street Bridge. Do we, I believe that'll be on the agenda on the 20.
It's making its way through the different boards and commissions right now, I believe today was.
RDA.
RDA.
And Traffic Advisory Board.
And Traffic, yeah, Traffic Advisory Board, so what we wanted to do is make sure we get all the boards and commissions compiled. The DOT, I think they want a quicker answer, but I think we need to get it through our boards and commissions, so the idea is to have it on the next meeting to, to get your final say, and we'll give you a summary of where the different boards and commissions, they're, they're lying in different places with this, different perspectives, but I think that's why you, we're looking for their input anyway. But we'll have it on next agenda.
Now, this is the second time for citizens to address the council, citizens are to address this council only. Statements are limited to five minutes and must address items that are not listed in the council meeting agenda, are limited to issues that have an impact on the city of Oshkosh, and the common council may address at a future meeting and must, must not include endorsements of any candidates or other electioneering.
My name is Patricia Deener, I am so excited for the Bucks to be coming here. We've been to Milwaukee, to the Mecca and that, and I did have a conversation with one of the gentlemen from Milwaukee, and we're trying to get some other ideas to go into, if they can do it like they did down at the Mecca. It depends if they can get a portable ice, to have ice capes here, and they're gonna have some bands and stuff, concerts, so I'm very happy for it, and I want to inform everybody this weekend is the polar plunge, and our, my credit union is having to the teller and one of the loan officers do the plunge, and I know Nikki will do a great job, and it's good, for a good organization, so it's gonna be a nice weekend, so I hope everybody can come out and really have a good time, and it's going for a good cause.
Thank you. Now, we move to council member announcements and statements, A and I first, and this is about the fire department food and toy drive. For those of you who are not aware, the fire department every December goes up and down the streets of the city of Oshkosh, collecting food, toys, and money, which all goes to the Salvation Army. There, I think many of the council members, me included, have walked along with the firemen in this collection, and it's a lot of fun despite the weather. This year, they did have to cancel two nights because it was so bitterly cold, but despite that, what they collected surpassed 2015. Helping the Fire Department was also the Oshkosh North Community's program students, but the results are as follows, and as I said before, this all goes to the Salvation Army. They collected 4,989 pounds of food, 2,873 toys, and cash $1,661.35. So it's just a great program, so I encourage everyone, if you're not involved, at least be waiting on your front porch this coming December with something for the firemen, and we'll again walk with them, so, thank you for a, for a job well done. Next, we go to Guns and Hoses, which is March 4th, Councilman Pack.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, well, we started the meeting talking about skating, and we'll talk about skating now. Saturday, March 4th, at 3:00 PM, at the Oshkosh Community YMCA, will be the annual Guns and Hoses game, which is a hockey game to raise funds for a cha- for charity. It's between firefighters and police officers, and as usual, I will be making my return trip. None of my fellow counselors seem to want to join me as part of my participation in that.
We throw out the puck.
But I will be, I will be putting the stripes on and the orange bands and trying to keep the gentlemen in check, so I will be refereeing the game again, but as you can see, these are the new jersey, or the new sweaters, hockey, they're called sweaters, that will be debuted this year, the red ones are the fire department, and the blue ones are obviously the police department. There will be raffles, and there will also, they also have some logoed pucks that will be distributed during warmups, so it's $5 for adults, and children are free. Please come out, support your local firefighters and police in giving back to the community, and it's, it's a great, it's really, really good hockey, too. So look forward to seeing many people out there, March 4th, it's a Saturday, Oshkosh YMCA, 20th Street at 3:00 PM.
And the refereeing's good, too?
Refereeing is questionable, but, but you know, as we always say, we may get the call wrong, but it's still the right call.
Because you're the ref. All right, next we, I'm sorry.
Just one quick little reminder, didn't get it on the agenda, so just to let you know, there is open voting at City Hall up through Friday for the primary, I am gonna ask Pam about the hours, because I'm not clear on that, just wanted to remind folks that you are able to do early voting for the primary.
Okay, early, sorry, early voting is starting, it started earlier, tomorrow we open at 8 till 4:30, Friday it'll be 8 until 5:00 PM.
Thank you. Thank you. You're welcome.
Okay, now we have city manager announcements and statements. Mr. Roloff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I put this as a place marker for the state budget and what it really means. I think we're probably going to find as much if not more. Tomorrow is the League of Wisconsin Municipalities Lobbying Day. The mayor, Council Herman, Deputy Mayor Allison Osby, is a maybe, but we're going to be going down to Madison to get a briefing. From a briefing standpoint, right now, it doesn't look like there's any increases in any of the major state aids. In fact, they're frozen, which means that, once again, the, what's about one-sixth of our budget is essentially frozen, and then that in turn gets pushed back on to taxpayers for that. So that's a major concern. The shared revenue program, payment for municipal services program are all frozen. There is a slight restoration of some recycling funds. You may recall that from last year. There are some minor tweaks to levy limits. Transportation aids are unknown. There's still a big discussion at the state level about what's going to happen with transportation. There was a slight uptick this year, but there was a major downtick on capital projects, but some aids to local governments was a minor increase, but certainly not enough to cover increased costs that we're having. But we'll take everything we can get. I think Mr. Witinski with the league's staff will give us a better briefing on what some of the other things are and what the likelihood are of changes, and we'll be visiting our state reps as well as some other state reps. Certainly one of the issues is going to be the rental inspection ordinance because we expect changes will be in the offing at some point. We want to make sure that our concerns are expressed about that program as well. Will we all, and I'm sure that this will come up, but please address to our local legislators the dark stores issue, which is costing our residential taxpayers a significant amount of money. This is where big box stores argue about that their, a store that's open is actually, has the same value as a closed big box store, which causes their assessment to go down, which shifts the tax burden to the residential property taxpayers. So this is something that I know this council has been banging the drum on for several years, and I know that this is something that is at the state legislature and that this is very important for localities. It's not just affecting Oshkosh, it's affecting Green Bay, Fond du Lac.
The whole country.
Yes.
It's more than the residents, it's the small businesses as well are being affected.
There was a great article, I believe it was in, was it yesterday?
Press was that, in the Northwestern?
Yeah, that talked about the dark store, and it was a very well-done story, and it explained the issues that all municipalities are having with the CVS, Walgreens, all the big box stores.
And that's number two on the league's agenda. Number three is to reverse the Walgreens decision. So there's a lot of things that have to do with property tax shift from commercial to residential, which is a major concern, as we've talked about a number of times. And the other thing is, highlight the importance of this particular legislation as related to changing daylight savings time.
Yeah.
That's a biggie. The sad thing is, all these big box stores, which many of us frequent, are really forcing their customers to pay their taxes. You know, their customers don't count for much. Apparently, and we're going to wind up, you know, property taxes will go up residential, they'll go up for small businesses. Small business doesn't have this opportunity that a Walgreens with hundreds upon hundreds of attorneys have to fight this in, not only in Wisconsin, but cities throughout the country. So it's got to be addressed at the state level. So that is our, one of our missions. If there's nothing more on that than Buckstaff demolition update and public improvements, tax increment, finance plan, and timeline. Mr. Roloff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We do have an item in your agenda, Pack, and certainly happy to answer any questions you might have. The, as you heard last week with the announcement with, from the Bucks, there's a very aggressive schedule to get the demolition done. Our city staff has been working a lot. I wouldn't say nonstop because there is nightfall, but they have been working a lot of hours to get the building down. And now, the building is down itself. Our job isn't to take the building down. Our job is to do some clearance from the main site where the footprint of the arena is going, as well as remove the concrete footprint. And we've rented equipment, and our staff's been working at clearing that, and that's going very well. We're still working on getting formal transfer of the property. The Bucks want, or the Mr. Pierce and the Fox Valley Pro Basketball group want to get started on Monday to start putting the, what are called the Geo Piers, which are basically the, what's going to give stability to the unstable soil site. Ms. Lawrenson has been working nonstop to work with the SBA that has a lien on the property. We're working on that. I want to tell you that it's all complete, but we can't say mission accomplished, but I will say that we are working with Congressman Growthman's office and Senator Johnson's office, primarily to have them impress upon the SBA that we need to get the liens removed from them. And I'll provide you an update in this week's newsletter on where we stand on that because it's a fluid thing, and Friday will be different than Tuesday. So we'll get you, we'll keep you posted, and, but our goal is to make sure that everything's available. Your approval of the lease tonight essentially puts me in a position to sign it. I am not in a position to sign it officially until we own it. That's a little thing called fraud that I think I want to avoid doing. So we'll be ready to do that. And we're looking at other alternatives, but we're really hoping that the attorney that has been assigned by the SBA to this will work with Attorney Lawrence and to get his superiors to get it approved. So we'll give you more on that later. There's a schedule on the, on the second page of the memo that Mr. Davis prepared, and really everything, once we get the lion's share of the work started with getting the ownership of it, then it's a matter of going through the TIF process. It's gone before the Plan Commission. Now, it'll be going back to council in a few weeks, and then there'll be a development agreement. We are not in a position to discuss the development agreement with council tonight, so we will not be having a closed session. We're just not in a position to do that yet. But we are working on that, and we've approved, the council's approved the application, hopefully a grant to offset some of those costs. The Fox Valley Pro Basketball will, fronting, as proposed, the improvements, all the public improvements, about three-point-three million dollars, they will be refunded through the proposed TIF. That's what the development agreement is in a nutshell, but details have to be worked out. Council needs to look at those, ask questions about them, because there may be some negotiations that need to take place. That'll be the purpose of the closed session. We're just not in a position to present anybody, anything to council just tonight. Any questions about the schedule or Mr. Davis's memo? Happy to address those things.
I'm sorry, I must have missed this. How soon do you think we might be looking or to reschedule that closed session?
It could be, depending on what happens with some of the things Ms. Lawrenson's working on, I could call you as early as next week. It could be the next council meeting. We're going to keep this item on the agenda just to keep you posted regardless of whether or not we have a closed session, but we, these things I can tell you in open session because there's no confidentiality. We're going to negotiate. When we, when it's time to tell you the terms, then we'll go into closed session, so we protect the city's interest in that. But we're not just ready yet, but depending on what happens with Ms. Lawrenson's search for an SBA approval, we may have to consider some other options. We may have to pull you in on some other proposal. But we're working on it. Very pleased with the, it's a very team-oriented approach to get this thing done, and we're going to work to get it done.
And meanwhile, too, if the public is interested in looking at some of the more specific renderings, those are available in the Community Development Office, or which office?
Line two.
Yeah.
Yeah, some of those drawings are pretty big.
Yeah.
I wouldn't recommend trying to open them, but Mr. Davis has some technological approaches that he think he's been trying, because a lot of people are asking about that. They really are.
Certainly, people could go look on the Plan Commission's website because all those drawings were part of the application that they made us, made to the Plan Commission, and the council subsequently approved, I think, last month. So those are certainly available, and as time goes by, I think we've even added the Sawdust District to give an idea of what the whole nature of the neighborhood is proposed to be. So that's all on our website right now if they choose to look at the Plan Commission.
I would suggest doing it at home rather than some public Wi-Fi. It'll take forever to download. There's some big files there.
Since we don't have a motion to go into closed session, I would look for an adjournment.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Adjourn.